All right, everybody, it's a touch after six. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. I appreciate everybody being here tonight. It's a special night, and I thank you all for coming. Sarah, when you are ready.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooten.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to invite to the podium from the Emerald Isle Fire Department, Will Coffey, to lead us in our invitational prayer. Good evening, sir.
I'm not going to use this. I'm pretty loud overall, so if you're loud, let's ask him. Gracious in heaven, God, and the Father, and the Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the ability and the freedom to gather here. We pray for our elected leaders, that they continue to do good things in our community. And as a staff, we pray for ourselves, that we continue to be good stewards of the people. And we thank you, him for this opportunity to lead, guide, and direct us in all things we do, in Jesus' name, my friend.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. All right, if you will, please stand and face our flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. All right, item number five on the agenda would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'm moved.
All right, old Commissioner Sanderson makes the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is carried. At this time, we'll invite up Joe Smith with Public Works, has a new hire recognition. Oh, I can tell you, yeah, go ahead. I forgot that one was digital, my apologies, but I know how much you love the spotlight, sir.
We welcome Vincent Girardi to our Public Works team. He comes from the Raleigh area. He worked for Raleigh Public Works for a few years, and then he went over the road and moved to the area because his brother lives in the area, so he moved up from Raleigh over to here, and he'll be a great addition, has a lot of experience, and we look forward to working with him.
All right, thank you, sir, and welcome Vincent. All right, I believe it's time for our esteemed Chief Panzarella. We have more recognitions. You wanted me to join you, correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to come before you tonight to provide some updates from the police department. Tonight, I'd like to recognize three officers for achieving professional certificates. These three officers will each receive their intermediate certificate, and one of the three officers will receive their advanced law enforcement certificate. These certificates are issued from the North Carolina Criminal Justice Education Standards Training Commission. These professional certificates are achieved by using a formula set forth by the commission. It's a formula compilation of education, meaning any college they may have, training hours, and experience. What I find most notable is the individual drive to seek the hundreds of hours of training to give them the knowledge and education to be more versed and prepared to better serve our great town. At this time, I'd like to recognize them individually, and they will come up, and the mayor and Assistant Chief Edwards will present them with their certificate. So these are for their intermediate certificate, and the first one is Sergeant Blaylock. The next one is Officer Tucker Robinson. Next is Officer Sam Scott. At this time, we will now present Sergeant Blaylock with his advanced certificate. The advanced certificate is the highest professional award you can get from the North Carolina Education Training and Standards Commission. Again, time in service and hundreds of hours of training. The drive that it takes to receive both of these awards is pretty remarkable, and so I would like to congratulate all three on receiving their intermediate, and Sergeant Blaylock for receiving his advanced certificate on behalf of the Town of Emerald Isle, the residents, and obviously the police department. These folks will be better prepared to serve you. Thank you. All right, at this time, we would like to, yeah, there we are. At this time, I'd like to invite retiring Fire Assistant Chief Donnie Askew up to the podium. Donnie, would you please join us, sir? There you are. We rented a truck for you to take all this stuff home with you. Donnie, welcome back, sir. It's really great to see you. The Town of Emerald Isle proudly presents this certificate of appreciation and gratitude to Assistant Fire Chief Donald Askew. In recognition of your outstanding service to the Town of Emerald Isle, embodying our values of integrity, commitment, and service, and for exemplifying steadfast dedication and loyalty, you made a difference in Emerald Isle. We wish you success and happiness in your retirement. On behalf of the mayor, Board of Commissioners, staff, and citizens of the Town of Emerald Isle, presented this ninth day of April 2024. Don't go away. Okay, great. All right. All right, next, but certainly not last. Donnie, the Town of Emerald Isle Board of Commissioners in appreciation of Assistant Fire Chief Donald Askew for dedicated service. Whereas the Town of Emerald Isle does desire to recognize and honor public employees of the town for dedicated and distinguished service to the community, and whereas Assistant Fire Chief Donald, Donnie Askew, served as Assistant Fire Chief for over 20 years and has rendered dedicated service to the Town of Emerald Isle and made significant accomplishments in the area of fire services and protection for over 35 years. And whereas Assistant Fire Chief Askew was a pillar of protection in terms of crisis, whereas Assistant Fire Chief Askew oversaw the fire inspection program, keeping residents and businesses safe, and whereas Assistant Fire Chief Askew has dedicated countless hours of leadership, courage, and integrity, and whereas he has worked to merge the fire and EMS departments together, and whereas Assistant Fire Chief Askew has been a true gift to his coworkers, mayors, and boards, and is the desire of the Town of Emerald Isle to recognize Assistant Chief Askew's dedicated service as he completes his chapter known as Assistant Fire Chief. Now therefore, I, Jason Holland, Mayor of Emerald Isle, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, extend our sincerest best wishes to Assistant Chief Donnie Askew as he undertakes this new chapter in the Book of Life, a chapter that includes doing whatever he pleases, whenever he pleases, a chapter entitled Retirement. Proclaim this ninth day of April 2023, Jason Holland, Mayor. Congratulations, sir.
Chief Askew, can I keep it short because I'm pretty sure I'm not going to hold it together, but thank you for everything that you have been for me, been for the crew. You heard it earlier at lunch. Thank you for your continuous years of service, your dedication, your passion. It does live on in everybody who you have touched, surrounding areas and other departments.
That's absolutely beautiful. Yeah, one more? Thank you, sir. Last one, we'll let you sit back down. Did you get a glimpse? I said, did you get a glimpse?
No, sir.
Okay, good. State of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and seal of Donald R. Askew. I do by these presents confer the order of the long-leaf pine. With the rank of ambassador extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to its members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast in select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the long-leaf pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State. Signed, Roy Cooper, Governor, April night, 2024. Thank you, sir.
I'd like to tell everybody, I want to thank the past and present boards for the opportunity. It's been a lot of fun working for the Town of Emerald Isle, Emerald Isle Fire Department. I truly appreciate it, and to the team, you're truly the best, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Chief, would ask one last thing, if you could do a county sign-off.
Assistant Chief Askew, that was very beautiful. Thank you for your decades of service to our town. It's greatly appreciated and will never be forgotten, sir.
All right, at this time, we'll move on to item number seven would be our public comment section. There was a sign-up sheet, there is, was a sign-up sheet over by the, on the table by the front door. If your name's on that list, we'll call them in that order. You're invited up to the podium to speak for three minutes. If you didn't see the sign-up sheet, missed the sign-up sheet, don't worry. When we get through everybody that did sign up, I'll give you an opportunity to raise your hand and speak. Going to do it a little differently tonight. Instead of the flag that I try to hold up and wave there, I know not everybody's paying attention to me while they're trying to get their thoughts out, so at the three-minute mark, I'm going to thank you for your comments, so you don't have to stop mid-sentence, but at that time, we finish our thoughts and move on so we can be respectful to the other speakers. That being said, Sarah will call our first witness.
Kevin Stewart.
All right, good evening. My name's Kevin Stewart, live at 7024 Emerald Drive. I'll say upfront, you know, I haven't lived in this town as long as everyone else, but I guarantee I love this town just as much as anybody else. I was blessed to serve in the Marine Corps for 30 years, so I'm a veteran and a damn proud American. And tonight, I've got the honor to represent some fellow veterans and friends for something that we're really passionate about. We are recently formed a nonprofit, Emerald Isle for Veterans, Freedom is Essential. So I don't know if it was by purpose, but it's great to see all the Fish Hut people here, because we stole that slogan, we love it. And I will say that we've got one singular purpose. It's local veterans, helping local veterans, and promoting patriotism. There's a great quote by a Marine Corps legend, "Do as much good as you can, for as many as you can, for as long as you can," and that's all that we're trying to do. And we do that by holding different events to raise money. So we've got a Memorial Day event planned. Great to see the Fish Hut, they're hosting, starting out at the Fish Hut, handing out flags. We're going to walk down to the traffic circle, place flags in the middle of the circle to honor, remember all those that have made the ultimate sacrifice. We're going to head to the Growler, have a great meal and a cold beer, and a wonderful day to enjoy Emerald Isle and appreciate all that we have in terms of the freedoms of this country. We're also planning a Fourth of July event, a family fun bike, walk, run, and a ceremony to honor America. Ronnie Watson's blessed us to let us host it at his building, and really, simple request, we'd love to partner with the Town of Emerald Isle to make these events even more successful. I've shared with some of the leadership some ideas of how the town could support us, received some positive feedback from that, and looking forward to continuing that discussion and seeing what we can do together to, again, honor our veterans, promote patriotism, and have a good time. Thank you all very much. Hoorah.
Thanks, sir.
Diane Schools.
Hey, stranger. How are you?
Hi.
Is it on?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll just, before you start, we'll just leave that thing on there. I know that button's small, it gets kind of few. When you're done, we'll just leave it on for the next person.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm still teary-eyed, some Donnies.
Me, too. Me, too.
That was awesome. Thank you all for doing that for me.
You hold that up closer so folks at home. There we go.
I'm still teary-eyed, anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
As you know, Art and I care about this town very much. Last year, I was very interested, concerned, and vocal about the tennis pickleball courts. What happened to the money that was budgeted and scheduled to be spent last year? The courts are now a safety factor I saw and neglected. We have one broken foot here tonight. We know of a broken hip and many, many falls because of the caulking job that was, that which catches in our toes on the court while we're playing. I've pulled up gobs of it. It's, it's just not sticking in the courts. Emerald Isle should have been the first this year to have the courts done by the company that never followed through with their contract last year. Did no one demand they fulfill their contract? Next, you'll have to close off the courts because of public safety, and we don't want you to do that, but we just want something done right now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ronnie Watson.
Excuse me. Well, I'm not here to complain, not tonight, but it might be a time. But you know something, as we all said, you know, Emerald Isle's dearer us, and I think we need to remember the history about how this island was formed. And you know, I think we, a lot of times that we forget, you know, in 1956, this island was bought by seven men, and I think all, I don't know if all of you know them, but I knew every one of them. But when started in Emerald Isle, of course, we were bought in 1956, and, or 54, and we was incorporated in 1956. And I bet you none of you know who the first mayor was. It won't me. Who do you think? George Spell. And he wasn't elected, he was interim mayor until we, until the town was incorporated. But I've done something tonight, or I have had something done, and I've got two guys that's going to bring in something I'd like to give the town. And you know, it's the first, I'll let you all see it, but these guys were raised here. Billy and Ferri, Billy and Jimmy Farrenton. And also, my daughter is a First Navy-born child, whether y'all knew that or not, Tammy Page Watson, she's standing right back there. Guys, this is the first town hall. I had an artist from Durham, North Carolina come down and paint this for me. And I want to get it to you guys. I have a plate coming for it that would say the first town hall, it just didn't get here yet, but take a look at it. That's how it was in the cars back in the 60s.
Thank you, Ronnie, that's very kind of you. Yes, ma'am.
Jim Thet.
My name is Jim Brett. My wife and I live at 305 Cape Lookout Loop in Emerald Isle. I was here last, oh, by the way, I got a hat on, but I'm not a construction worker, so just to let you know, I'm retired. I'm a retired school teacher and an old football coach, but, and with a bad back, I might add. But I was here at the last meeting and spoke, and there were several people who spoke also in regards to the things that you guys were getting ready to vote on. And you, seems like to me, you voted against what most of the people in the community wanted you to vote for, because they were sitting here, and some of them spoke, and some of them said some things that they were hoping that you would do or not do, and you voted against them for that, not for them saying that, but for that. And it didn't sit well with a lot of people, really, especially people that live here. Most of the people that were in here that night don't even live here, that were standing up in the back and all, they don't live on this island. They don't have anything to do except maybe build something on the island, and I just, it's hard for me to understand why that would happen. Okay, the other thing I'm very concerned about is, there's a lot of, my wife used to be the principal out at White Oak Elementary School, and she's retired also now, but there's a lot of controversy going on about the SRO officer at White Oak, and who's going to pay for it and how it's going to get paid for it. And I've been watching the county meeting, and the county board of commissioners says they're not going to fund it. Yeah, Kate Carter-Rett also says they're not going to fund for an SRO officer. Well, I think that you guys and girls, ladies, should organize a little bit and think about trying to organize some help to get to these, for these SRO officer. It's important that we have one. We'd be the only school without one. White Oak Elementary will. And I know it's in Kate Carter-Rett, but still, a lot of our kids go to White Oak Elementary School, and we need to protect those kids and make sure that all of them are safe. Oh, that's about all I got to say. I knew I'd be under the limit, so, next up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anissa Stewart.
Where's she going? Where's she? You were signing into the meeting, weren't you?
Sarah, Sarah Fulford.
Good evening, ma'am.
So we drew the short straw and have to, had to come off the pickleball courts to make the meeting, so. So pickleball is a great sport, as you know. It's really designed to bring folks together across multiple demographics and age groups, and that's exactly what happens out here. And we, as the pickleball club, try to make sure that we always have positive interactions with both our local community as well as any of the tourists that come out, and they come out en masse. So with that said, we just have a couple of comments and some questions that we were hoping we could get answered. So like the previous speaker, we were under the impression that the court resurfacing was budgeted in fiscal year 2023, and there appeared to be materials that were purchased and left by the side of the court. So we're curious if those were purchased by the contractor or by the city, and if they were purchased by the city, are they still viable? And if they're not viable, how much money was lost due to the damage to those materials? The courts specifically for pickleball appear to be one of the most consistently used amenities in the town by both locals and tourists. So we're wondering how the rec projects that get budgeted for are prioritized. Is that done by the council? Is there a committee of local citizens that come together to look at all the projects and help to prioritize those from the community perspective? The next question we have is that the pickleball club regularly has 30-plus people attend our three organized open play events each week, and that's even with the courts in their current condition. So we're wondering if there's going to be a downtime this year, or if there's any chance that there could be money found in the current 2024 budget for resurfacing and relining of the courts. Tourists commonly comment when they come out on the poor condition of the courts and say that it is a very bad reflection on the town, which in every other aspect is fabulous. So we also want, would like to know what the estimated budget for the resurfacing and relining is expected to be, because the pickleball club could potentially help with that if there is a way to help to find contributions or to sell merchandise or things like that. We're looking at how we might be able to assist. And we also want to confirm that the plan would still be in the budget for there to be four pickleball courts on two tennis courts. Will the budgeting request include appropriate nets that will be available during all hours the court is open and not limit players' access to pickleball nets only when the rec center is open? And last question, is it possible to actually get answers to these questions in writing at some point or even verbally? at some point or even verbally? I'm happy to provide email addresses. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it, and to to not do the dialogue back and forth at public comments, we don't, but to to the short answer to your question, item number 13B1, it is very much going to be discussed tonight, options for tennis and pickleball courts. It'll be a comprehensive discussion, so I knew you drew the short straw. You might want to hang around a little while. I think most, if not all, of your questions will be answered tonight. So thank you.
Drew Walker.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. So I think I'm here on the perfect night. Love seeing all of the major accomplishments by the police and fire teams. It's it's a welcome sight, and culturally, it is something you experience when you engage with that team. I don't think I've had a bad engagement with the team overall. I'm here tonight because I want to ask for your help. A neighboring town needs some of that cultural help. So Cape Carteret has been outspoken, and it has now spilled out into a public debate about their removing the school resource officer at White Oak Elementary. As you can imagine, as a parent of two elementary students, I am very concerned about this. I'm not the only one. I attended the Cape Carteret meeting last night. I was disappointed that Frank snuck out after the, after the fire presentation, because he was there. And the board is very outspoken. We're basically at the kindergarten equivalent of I'm taking my damn ball and going home. That's where we are. And the county is responding by being a kindergartner, sitting in front of the basketball hoop, crying, going, why'd you take the ball and go home? What does this have to do with you? There are 119, thank you, Matt, for that number, elementary students at White Oak Elementary who live on Emerald Isle. You are their elected officials. And another town's board and your county board, our county board, has decided that we're going to have a temper tantrum publicly and start name-calling and finger-pointing over this whole thing. It's a disgrace. It's an absolute disgrace. So I'm here to ask for your help. How do we take some of this culture that exists here? And how do we help our neighbors? It's easy to miss an email sometimes, but I came tonight because I wanted to be in front of you and look you in the eye and tell you, a community that does not protect its children is not a community. This may not be your jurisdiction, but it could be. We owe that to every child. You can't help but notice when you come to a meeting like this, there's often police presence. No different tonight, even after all of the discussion and the awards, there's still police presence. You're grown adults. Do you need protection? I have a six-year-old going to that school. I don't think his Nerf gun is going to help him. I'm asking you guys, explore every option, MOAs, aid agreements, whatever it takes. I don't care who provides it. I care that my kid comes home at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Karen McCarron.
Hey, Karen.
Hi. First-time speaker, longtime admirer. Um, I didn't get to talk with, I'm sorry, I didn't get to talk with Sarah speaking, but I just want to say that, once again, with the pickleball, I really wish they had named that sport something else, too. But there has never been another activity on Emerald Isle where I have been able to meet so many of my neighbors and and now friends. And so it is, it really is strengthening the community, and I just want to throw that out there. It's a sport that can encourage all ages, skills, mobility. It's getting people out, it's getting them active, and it's getting them engaged. I typically, myself, travel to Havelock, to Jacksonville, to Swansboro, and to Morehead City to play. When people ask me where I'm from, I tell them Emerald Isle. I'm very proud of that. Then they ask why I don't play here, and I have to tell them that, well, there's kind of two reasons. One is the condition of the courts, and the other is, is really when the teams play with 30, 40 people sometimes, I have the opportunity to play elsewhere, so I don't want to take that away from someone else. And so that's why I don't play at the courts that are a mile from my home. So again, I just wanted to encourage, if you will, that part of our community as well. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was all that signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that missed the sign-up sheet that has anything there to say?
Hi, my name is Rena Pop. I live on Cory Coke Drive here on Emerald Isle, and I just have two things to say. First, I was at the last meeting. I've been at a lot of the meetings with the stormwater issue. The contractors have been out here very passionate. The community has been out here very, very passionate every single meeting. And, you know, I was here for the vote last week. But one thing, the vote, everybody agreed on, two of the commissioners said it themselves, it wasn't being enforced. The contractors said themselves, it wasn't being enforced. And the community came out and said to themselves, it wasn't being enforced. So I'm going to come here every single meeting and ask, how is it being enforced? If we all agree on that, then there has to be a solution to moving ahead, giving the community what they wanted, because they didn't want the contractors to get what they wanted. And I understand you have your reasons for voting while you did, and that's fine. But I'm saying, if everybody agreed that it's not being enforced, then we need to come up with a solution of how it's going to be enforced. And then it goes back to the same thing about pickleball. I've been coming to these meetings, and these people have been passionate about pickleball for over a year and a half, two years. And I know you now are going to say something that you're doing, but it's been taken how long? And I'm sorry, I love pickleball people, but I'm a tennis person. And now we have one court for pickleball and now one court for tennis. And it's hard to get on, I, it's hard, it's hard to get on either thing, because I, you're signing up for one or for the other, and you often can't get on. So that's not the solution, to tear down a pickleball court and only have one and one. So I'm just saying, these issues that people are very passionate about, the stormwater, the pickleball, like I, I just think there needs to be a faster way to come up with these solutions, because the community is very passionate about both, and we just don't feel like we're being heard. Okay, and I have one more thing. Do I have time?
About a minute, yeah.
I've got 52 seconds, okay. I would really like, at some point in the meeting, for issues that were addressed the last meeting, to say, okay, Rena Pop, you stood up and you were passionate about pickleball, and you said this. This is how we're addressing it. You, you stood up and you said this. This is how we're addressing it. I would just like some kind of feedback to where everybody gets up and is passionate about something, to say, this is how we're dealing with it, and this is what we're doing, because we don't feel like it's being heard right now. And I'm sure you are listening to us, but we just don't know how. And I just ask that maybe there could be something added to the meeting to respond to our concerns.
All right. Did we miss anyone else?
Oh, yeah.
Hey, good evening, sir.
Kent Farnesenberg, who just happens to be the husband of that little spitfire over there. But we agree on the same thing. Last month, and I'd like to welcome all the Emerald Isle residents, because guess what? We're all the builders. Last month, they walked in here, they got everything they wanted, and then they left, and they're not here. They are not the most important people in our community. These people are the most important people in our community. They're the ones who have the stormwater damage. They are the ones who have the 35% rules that are not being followed. I walked into another community down in Emerald, where was that? Over by another house being built. No refuge. So the question is, we don't, who's controlling? You all said that we need to control this. Does Matt Zap not have enough money to go through and watch this process? Because it's a problem, continually a problem. Poor woman last month complained that her thing, water was being into her backyard every day, so she couldn't even play with her children. But everybody said, okay, we're going to look at it, and I don't think it's really going to be looked at. I appreciate Mark Taylor. He said, we need, he's the only one who voted against it. There's another commissioner who listened for an hour and a half and didn't have a word to say about it. You guys are, you are, we voted you in to make a change, and my problem is, I don't see that change. The tennis courts, the pickleball courts, whatever it is, it's not being changed. Nothing's happened in a year and a half. So my question is, does Matt Zap, is Matt the problem? Are you guys going to fund him, to give him enough opportunity to make the changes, to make these things be watched? Or are we just going to continue to do nothing? Because doing nothing is doing nothing, and doing nothing does not help our community.
Thanks, sir. Did I miss anyone else? All right, we will move on to item number nine. Thank you, everybody that came out and spoke tonight. I appreciate you all, and I don't know if Mr. Watson's still in the house or not, but having that commission painting was a heck of a gesture. We appreciate that very much. But I thank everybody for coming out and speaking. Excuse me, item number nine would be the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Commissioner Sawyer makes the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Let's see, item number 10 would be the discussion around considering establishing a stormwater management committee. Mr. Seabird, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So during the March 24th, 2024 planning board meeting, the vote, the board unanimously voted to recommend this board to establish a stormwater management committee consisting of at least one representative of both boards, the board of commissioners, planning board, town staff, representative of local contractors. The purpose of the committee is to review the current regulations specific to stormwater management and make recommendations on improvements that could, could be made. It is expected that this committee, committee exists for the duration of these reviews and dissolve once the stormwater management section of the UDO updating is complete. The board will not be asked to appoint members at the, at this meeting tonight, but it is up for discussion. That's basically all I have on that. I'm open for any questions.
I'll just, on the suggested motion, I'll just kind of add the purpose of the discussion there to lead the board off. You guys can talk about it however you want, but this listed, the agenda listed as a discussion item, if the commissioners would like to establish a committee, recommend in a motion to provide the following parameters. One, how many members will the committee consist of? Who the members represent? The expected outcome of the committee? Any additional code that the committee should review outside of stormwater and the expected duration of the committee? Review of potential amendment to establish a committee to, to review the stormwater? There was something in my notes here, I'm losing it right now, as far as who the committee consists of, possibly one to two commissioners, someone representing the building committee, committee or community.
Planning board member.
Planning board member and potentially someone out in the, out in the field there. So I'm going to open it up for discussion for the board.
Mayor, I attended the, the planning board meeting last month, and I'd like to let folks know that, if, if, let me put analogy to it, kind of like to remodeling. If you're going to remodel, make improvements to your home, you just don't want to go in and do it over top of the existing stuff. Good builders are going to come in and they're going to gut the place down to the bare walls, then make sure it's reinforced the structural integrity of the, the house, and then they're going to remodel it and make improvements on top of new construction. And, and that's a lot like what we're doing now. We just took ordinance back to the original stormwater ordinance that existed in Emerald Isle before, and, and now with this, going back to the planning board committee, planning board, we're going to go back and, and make the necessary improvements without going too excessive in one way, but yet still, still going to have engineering involved. It's, it's a, but the, the ordinance before, just even the one prior to that, it just treated the, the symptoms. We need to get down and treat the actual root of the problem. We had a scientific study done by ECU geologists to determine what that was. They conducted tests over a 15-month period and determined that, that what the town was doing was putting more stormwater underground, and they can't hold it. And so what we got to do is treat the water before, even, because the, the town is getting built out, there's a lot more impervious coverage than what there used to be. And, and so the, the scientific study said, treat it with impervious coverage limitations. And so I spent about two weeks after the last board meeting, staying up till, some of you got my emails at one in the morning, one o'clock in the morning, where I was working on this ordinance, ordinance and sending it out. But I drafted up a, a stormwater ordinance that's innovative, based on the North Carolina Department of Environmental Qualities recommendations with stormwater management section. I worked with the department for 32 years, and it's, the state has gone to treating impervious coverage also. And, and that's what we have next to outstanding resource waters. The state's recommendation is to treat impervious coverage and let, let nature do its job and soak it up. We have good soils here for doing that, except for the areas where it's flood-prone. And so what we did is, what I've done is proposed an ordinance to the planning board, and like to work on a committee with that myself, too, and, and use that to incorporate impervious coverage limitations throughout the town, not just in KAMA areas of environmental concern, because right now, that's the only area that has impervious coverage limitations. And so if we did that throughout the town and, and then have the stormwater engineering requirement where the, the planning director or the, the stormwater ordinance administrator can request engineering data if it's necessary. In every case, it shouldn't be just a every single case. I mean, it's like going to see the doctor, and every case, they're going to recommend that you have your appendix taken out when it's not necessary. So the same thing here, it's just that we, we don't have to do it on every single house. Every single property does not need that. And, and I will say about the builders, the reason why the builders were in here, because they represented people that they have already built houses for, and they're representing, who are citizens of the town, they're also representing future citizens of the town and not a person in here, except for maybe a few of you, if you built your own house entirely by yourself, stick by stick, your home was built by a builder. And that builders that were in here were representing the citizens that they've done work for of this town. So it wasn't that weird, we gave them a freebie. It's just that they were speaking, being their voice, because they're the ones who have to go in and get the permits and apply. And, and if any of you have had to go through a process like that, you would understand that it is a rigorous process to go through the permitting, and especially one that requires two layers of redundant engineering. And so what we did is just strip the thing down, back to the original ordinance that was working well for many years in Emerald Isle prior to the, the new one, and just take it back to that, and now we're going to even make that ordinance even better, because we're going to be hopefully, hopefully, looking at impervious coverage limitations, which is what the state recommendation and their guidelines go by. So that's what we've been doing. It's not like we're just sitting around, sitting idle on it. There are plans to implement this, and, and if the board would see fit, I'd like to be the commissioner to represent on that board, because I've worked in that my entire career. And I think I And I think I could contribute to the committee like that. But the planning board received it, and they were excited about it. They liked the idea of having an innovative stormwater, using nature-based strategy, using native-based plants that soak up stormwater, drink stormwater. And I kind of joke about saying, we're going to store the water vertically now in the vegetation rather than horizontally in plastic tubing and pipes, especially in the flood-prone areas. And the ordinance, as I drafted it, would reward people who preserve as much natural vegetation as possible. And so you might get like an impervious coverage credit for that. So, and then if you don't, if you're a lot stripped bare, and you don't have any natural kind of vegetation, then you might be limited to the 25% impervious coverage limitation. So there's, there's other factors, a whole bunch to look at at this. It's going to take a little while to get things done, but we're not just leaving the town hanging on this. And the planning director, at this discretion now, can require an engineered stormwater plan. So I think we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
You're ready?
It sounds like with this explanation we've received from Commissioner Brownlow here that we may have accomplished what this committee would have needed to do, so I'm trying to rationalize the need for a committee when we apparently have the answers.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I would add, I kind of like the idea of putting a committee together because, and I like a lot of the work that Commissioner Brownlow's done, and I would suggest he's probably the right one from this group to represent. But to answer the questions that are on here, I think it makes sense to have somebody from this board and the planning board, and then one from the east and the middle and the west of town, and try to simplify the ordinances that are on the book, because they are complex at times, and I think that leads to the enforcement challenges. I don't, I'm not looking for a perpetual committee. I'd say make it, you know, a 12-month thing. Task them to start with the cleaning up the ordinances, making them understandable, then maybe tackle the enforcement, come up with some suggestions about how to address enforcement challenges, what kind of help do you need to be able to enforce these hopefully simplified, streamlined ordinances? And then, you know, have it come up for some regular cycle. Like I said, I don't think it's a perpetual committee, but we did, we just went through a process where we had one thing passed on a previous board, and then we kind of put it back similar to what it was. Now we have some great ideas that are on the table, but the feedback from folks in town is we're not getting things changed fast enough. So maybe having a small group that's focused on it, meet maybe more than monthly, to have conversations around it and figure out what is the, what's the way to get rapid success in addressing some of these concerns, or confirming that things are what they are, but at least having that explanation for the town. So I think you're right, Alicia, that we do have a lot of the answers, but I think it might be worth having a small group of smart people study it and see if we can't make it even a little bit better.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sawyer or Taylor, anything to add? Say again?
No comment.
All right. All right. Well, the discussion item was to consider establishing the committee, so I'm going to pass it right back to the board for a motion to either establish one or not establish one, so I'll wait on you all.
I'll make a motion to take the planning board's advice and create a five-member committee for a limited duration to be focused on stormwater in particular and how to simplify it.
Can we, just for the black and white, can we, you've mentioned 12 months, I'm not putting words in your mouth, how long?
Yeah, what I, I made that up. If somebody's got a better idea, then I'm open to it, but 12 months seemed about right.
All right. There's a motion on the floor from Commissioner Wooton to establish a five-member stormwater committee for the duration of 12 months. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much. I have to apologize, I have to back up before we go to our next, Chris, it won't take but a second, but I went right past the public announcements. I know everybody didn't read our website or catch our newsletters, so could we, I'm sorry, in the control room, could we back up and roll those public announcements, please? I'm sorry.
Welcome to the Emerald Isle April Public Service Announcements. Summer Day Camp registration is now open. Registration for the lottery system will close on April 19th. Please go to the town's website for more information. Paid parking will begin on April 13th, and two free passes are available for Emerald Isle taxpayers. Parking passes are distributed from the Emerald Isle Police Department. You can find additional details about paid parking and these passes on our website. The next police educating the public takes place on April 16th. This event is held in the town board meeting room next to the police department. It begins at 10:00 a.m. and will not exceed one hour. There will be a blood drive held on April 19th by the American Red Cross. This blood drive will be held from 1:00 to 5:30 p.m. at the Emerald Isle Community Center. Mark your calendars for the Ninth Annual Bike the Banks, which offers three different bicycle rides to complete, a 10-mile, a 50-mile, and a 100-mile option. This event will take place on Saturday, May 4th. The next planning board meeting takes place on April 22nd from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The next Coffee with a Cop is on April 25th from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. Join your neighbors and the Emerald Isle Police Officers for coffee and conversation. This event is held in the town board room next to the police department. Beach driving ends on April 30th. We're thrilled to announce a brand-new event series that's all about fostering community connections and meaningful discussions. Say hello to Community Conversations, your quarterly opportunity to sit down with our local commissioners in a relaxed, friendly environment. Our first event is on May 1st at Gaffer's on Coast Guard Road from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. The next Neighborhood Watch meeting takes place on May 7th at 4:00 p.m. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting takes place on May 14th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. in the town board room.
Thank you very much. All right. Let's see here, I just apologize for missing that. Thank you, Control Tower, for getting back to that for me. Next item up would be item number 11, the discussion considering, to consider establishing rules and requirements specific to sidewalk dining. I'm just going to go through the summary. It's been requested by a local restaurant owner that we consider establishing the rules and regulations necessary to permit the dining within an NC Department of Transportation right-of-way, which includes sidewalks. These options are permitted through but not limited to NC general statutes 136-189 and 136-27.4. If the town would like to establish such an arrangement, it would include, one, excuse me, an agreement between the town and the North Carolina Department of Transportation, the development of an ordinance that addresses sidewalk dining, and establishing a permitting process for the use. I'll let you go with the more in-depth there, Mr. Chris.
Well, Mayor, you covered it fairly well.
I understood you thundered.
So, yeah, this has been requested by a local restaurant owner. It would allow seats in the right-of-way, no, nothing covering it, it would be open air. If the town would like to investigate it, the first step is to enter into agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation, copy the agreement that they provided is in the packet for your review. And then, once that has occurred, we can develop an ordinance. They've given us, we've actually found Greenville has something very similar. We can mold that based off of what our needs are as a town if the commissioners instruct to move forward with that. The specifics on the code can vary. You can limit certain locations, you know, but there is requirements to always keep a certain width of the sidewalk open and unobstructed. There are liability coverages that the restaurant owner would have to secure, so there's whole parameters involved on that to include a permitting process. So that's the very brief basics on there, but I am open if there are any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. I think it's a great idea. You know, public outside eating, I think it's a great spot, it's more room, it's not crowded up, it helps our restaurant people operate in a more freely way. I think it's a great, a great idea. That's my thought.
Thanks, sir. What else?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, they've had seats there since they've opened, it's a great spot for the community. Lots of people get out there, talk, hang out, talk about issues in the community. I think it's a great idea.
I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim. I'll go. I like the idea of it, a couple of things, and you probably covered in the ordinance part of it, but the safety concerns, folks are that much closer to the street than traffic and cars and all that. I'm assuming that'll get taken care of. And then I would think that the folks that get the permits to do this, those permits would be significant, sufficient to cover all of the town's costs for going through all this process and establishing these and keeping track of the permits and doing inspections and any other things. So I think it would be a, not a small permit, but certainly affordable.
Yeah, we can certainly set the permit fee to do our best to recover any cost the town carries on it.
Mr. Brownlow, you have something to add, sir?
Yes, I've read through that NC DOT state statute. It's 136-18, and boy, I mean, it's like, many pages long here, it's like, I don't see how many pages it was, but about 20 pages. Rather intensive permit to have to get, so I feel confident in the state's permitting requirements that it's putting on the town. The town, of course, it wants to see a copy of the town's ordinances addressing that. My only, sort of, I support that idea, because I love a community atmosphere about eating outside in like a village-type style eating. But the, just the other day, like I was coming by the Fish Hut Grill, and a little child ran out from the parent and was running toward Highway 58, Emerald Drive. The parent got to him about the time they got to the middle of the ditch, and so I was just like, oh, boy, you know, and the speed limit through there is 45, even though it's right by the stoplight, stoplight screen, cars are getting it. So I would say that as long as we can have some kind of, when we draft an ordinance for it, that it require an enclosure that a child can't pass through just for safety if it's that close to the road, I think that's, that would be a plus if we could do that. Snappers already have something in place similar to that now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. If there's no other questions from Mr. Seberg or comments or questions from the commissioners, I'll ask for a motion. There's a suggested motion in our agenda packet, so, but I'll pass it back to you all.
I make a motion to instruct the review and execution of the sidewalk dining agreement, and for the planning board to start developing the necessary code to permit the sidewalk dining, instruct the town staff and planning board to start developing necessary permitting process for sidewalk dining.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Sanderson with the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right. Item number 12, Mr. Microphone Joe Smith's got some public works updigs for us. You a clicker? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, town councilmen and ladies and staff. I come here tonight to discuss with you the options to purchase or lease a new buckle boom truck, and a directive to whether or not move forward with the walkways at the emergency vehicle ramps at Dogleg and Black Skimmer. My first one is going to be about the knuckle boom truck and our options, because our lease runs out the end of June. So after June, we'll have to purchase, we'd like to purchase a new boom truck to take place of this one. Our current lease right now, monthly cost is $2,600 a month, with a yearly cost of The new lease is increased to $48,25, which would equate to $57,900 a year. And we have another option to purchase a new truck. That monthly cost would be $42,50, with a cost of $51,000 per year. The savings on purchasing the truck would be $575 or $6,900 for the, for that year. Our current truck that's going off is, has like 36, almost 37,000 miles. We've had it for three years, so it's getting time to replace it.
Would you like me to take this part?
If you want.
It's up to you. Miss Laura had a family emergency, so in her absence tonight, Joe and/or the audience and the board, if you have any finance-related questions, I'll be sure to answer them to the best of my ability, let you know why she had to excuse herself.
Thanks, sir.
So talking with Laura and stuff like that, we would like to increase the solid waste by $5 per household per year, from $295 a year to $300. It will cover the cost in need of the new truck, which is like 42 cents per month per household, I think it comes up to. I mean, we need kind of a, I guess, a decision tonight on how to move forward with this, because like I said, our lease is ending, but we can keep the lease going month-to-month, depending on if we give them permission to order the truck and get the truck ordered, because I think the lead time was anywhere from three to six months to get the truck. Actually, they do have one on the yard possibly that we can purchase, and also what you have to do is tomorrow, give them a letter of intent stating that we are committed to purchasing this vehicle come July 1st, and then we will have it there sitting and waiting for us. So that's why I'm asking you tonight to please make a decision on that one, so we can move forward with purchasing the truck.
So Mayor, we were in this position three years ago, where at the end of first quarter of a calendar year, you need to make a decision, so you don't want to have a lag time. We know that this program is not, it's definitely one of our most popular. So when we ran the analytics with the new interest rates and residuals on the vehicles, leasing doesn't seem to be a good financial option like it was 36 months ago. Staff recommendation is again to purchase, and as Joe indicated, if we make a decision and a vehicle's still available, we may get the one that's on the lot. If it's already sold, then we may have one here July 1, August 1, or September 1, to make sure we had a backup, and that backup is to extend that month-to-month lease program. So if we can get concurrence on lease or purchase, and then we can begin that arbitration with our state bid pricing, it will keep us from having interruption service in early summer.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board, conversations?
Can we just buy the one that's coming off, please?
You could, but the reality in purchasing a vehicle with that much road time is not a good decision. They end up often having breakdowns now at this point. So why we purchase and maintain for 36 months is to keep our interruption at near zero. So it's not a good investment for us to purchase. Those machines fail with their hydraulics all the time.
Do we have like a monthly, we have a history of having to maintain them more and more as we get?
Yes, sir. So we were running trucks five years, and we found that the cycle of breakpoint was between month 36 and 48, so we tried to buy a, purchase a vehicle that stays under warranty in that 36-month period.
Five years is like Matt said, five years is usually the point where we found we were having major booms cracking and breaking and just getting more tedious in maintenance and wearing parts and stuff like that.
Would we keep, if the, when the other lease expires, would we keep two trucks, or would we just let that one go?
Well, that really wasn't an option, as of right now, we run two brush trucks. So if you decide that we can purchase the new vehicle or lease it, then once July 1st comes up, we would hopefully have that truck on ground, ready to go. If not, we can continue the lease that we have now at that price until our new vehicle comes in.
I mean, like if we, if we purchase the new truck, if we concur to that, board approves that, then would we continue to lease the second, the other truck?
Yeah, so we run two trucks five days a week, 50-plus weeks a year. We make about 30. We make about 34,000 stops a year, so it requires now two trucks. So what we have currently in inventory is staggered new trucks. And so we have two leased vehicles, but now we need to replace the elder of the two. So whatever decision you make, whether you lease or buy, it's really amateurizing over time, so we need those two vehicles. We need a new truck by July 1.
All right, and then if we, if we get the new truck, and then we, of course, now we're running two trucks, right?
Correct.
All right, the lease expires on the other one, do we buy another new truck or do we try to lease it up?
We need two vehicles is all. We just need to know we're replacing one. Do you want to purchase or lease the new truck?
When we, when that other one comes, when that lease expires and there's a potential for an increase, I believe the answer that you're looking for is then we would be faced with this again, be that two years from now or one year, however long that lease term is.
Yes, the lease agreement we have is 36 months.
Both trucks.
Both trucks.
And we stagger them so that you always have a brand-new truck and a relatively new truck, and you're keeping your maintenance at near zero so that we don't have service interruption.
And we, Ed, being from the last board too, it's important what they're talking about because what happened, and we learned from this three or four years ago, if a truck breaks down, then you have to find the parts for it. And we don't want to get in that breakdown period where we're dealing with it all the time because it's probably, some of you remember, three or four years ago, we'd go two weeks and your street would still have bushes and trees laying on the side of the road because we didn't have enough trucks to do it. So this is why we came up with this option that they're talking about now. It's very important to.
Oh, it's a great program. I mean, I love it. I've heard nothing but kudos from the citizens about this. And I praise them myself just, you know, because I've used that service myself many times. But just wondering, like, we will maintain two trucks and are they going to be both be purchased trucks or are we going to continue to lease one?
One will be leased, one will be purchased.
Yeah, you do, you run the numbers each and every time because the market's going to shift. So if it's financially beneficial to lease like it was the last two times, we would lease and save the town $20,000, $25,000 a year. But now the leases have exceeded the purchase price. And then when you get to 36 months, let's fast forward today, so 2027, April of 2027, we will want to sell this truck we're buying today. We'll get back $180,000, $190,000. And then we will use those dollars, basically it's the same program we have with all of our passenger vehicles. But what you're trying to do is we want our residents to pay the least amount, and we found a 42 cent per month option to keep that service. So we would highly advocate purchasing this one. We'll maintain it for 36, 38 months, sell it when it's getting close to getting tired and get another new one in so we don't have any breakdowns.
Thank you. Is everything in this package, are these all the budget requests for the year?
We have our majority of your large-ticket capital items. These, outside of the knuckle boom truck, everything else you'll discuss tonight was generated by this board at the January retreat. Yes, sir.
But there's not going to be another one next month with like police department?
No, sir, we've met with each of the department.
Okay, cool. All right. I'd like to make a motion to purchase the new truck.
All right. Commissioner Sawyer has the motion on the floor to purchase instead of lease. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you for all the work you did.
Thank you. So my next one was discussed at the commissioners' retreat. We were talking about, there was, I guess, some asked at Black Skimmer and Dogleg for pedestrian walkway down the emergency vehicle ramps. We looked at some pricing to see what it would cost, to see if it's feasible. Here's the Dogleg. If you could see it, there's already an existing sidewalk started from previous years, and it kind of ends at the brush line there to be on the left side or east side of the Dogleg walkway. So I contacted a local company just to see about finishing up the sidewalk with concrete and then adding a retaining wall, either block or wood, to help hold back the dune that's there and then try to continue the sidewalk down. I think it was maybe 100 feet or something. I can't remember exactly, but it wasn't going all the way down because of the wash and the sand and stuff like that at the Dogleg. So our options are for a wooden retaining wall with the sidewalk included is $12,240. Option two would be a block retaining wall with the sidewalk added in. That is $20,560. Or we can just leave it the way it is and there'd be, you know, nothing done there, just keep it the way where they walk, use caution to access the beach at the Dogleg. Then our next one was Black Skimmer. We looked at doing that one on the west side or the right-hand side if you're entering the beach to do the walkway through that way. Same thing, it would be concrete with either a block or a wooden retaining wall. But this one also had a handicap parking spot there that is now gravel, so we looked at possibly doing pervious concrete there. The cost on that, option for the wooden retaining wall would be $28,000. That includes the sidewalk and the parking ramp. The block wall would be $43,400, and that includes also the sidewalk and the parking pad.
Joe, if you would, we're going to address these one at a time, so this would be item 12B.
Yes.
If you would back up to the Dogleg numbers, I'm going to open up to the board for discussion, and the board's asked to decide if they want to move forward with pedestrian act, pedestrian access construction on each, but we'll address Dogleg pedestrian walkway first. Before the commissioners discuss, can you, where would the funding, or you or Matt, either one, where would the funding come from that on either front?
Sure. So these are new projects that we were asked to research. There's currently no funding associated with these, and these aren't on our capital improvement plan. So if the board chooses to fund option one or two on Dogleg and/or option one or two on Black Skimmer, we'll do our very best to try to include them in the budget for '24, '25. But in theory, with no tax rate increase and trying to maintain the exact same tax rate, any major purchases would thus come out of a potential in fund balance, which is ultimately our reserve savings account. So you would be just telling us what you want to do. We would try to include it in the budget, but right now in the preliminary figures, we don't see having a surplus to accommodate these improvements yet, but we're in the very early stages of crunching all the numbers.
Okay, great.
Short answer, potentially fund balance.
Okay. I just figured someone would want to know, it's important to the discussion. So I'll open it up to the board to discuss 12B, Dogleg pedestrian walkway first, and then we'll move to Black Skimmer.
I have a question. Which one of these gets more traffic?
What type of traffic? Vehicular traffic or walking traffic?
Well, you wouldn't know, you wouldn't know pedestrian probably, but vehicular.
Well, because what we could say is if you go back to the photograph. So for this one, we can answer your direct question that the majority of vehicular access would be at Black Skimmer specifically because that's where the emergency representatives are accessing the beach, at most times coming out of Fire Station 1. So we can articulate that answer best. We don't have a physical counter that will tell you how many cars are coming and going. So we appreciate the question. Unfortunately, we don't have the data and can't provide it to you. But what we do know is that a majority of the people that are accessing the beach for beach driving historically will do so at the Point. So the Point is the number-one access point, access entry area for vehicular traffic on a seasonal, off-season point. But what we do know is that there's a tremendous amount of people that walk this in its current state at both the Dogleg and Black Skimmer. We just don't have any numerical data to.
Yeah, no, that was kind of my intuition as well. I was wondering if we might be able to do one this year and the other one next year and see if we learn anything doing the first one.
Yes, sir. Great question. If you were to ask us to prioritize, from my desk, we would tell you that the greatest mix of vehicles and people would potentially be Black Skimmer over Dogleg. And I would say, Joe, would you agree?
Oh, yes, yes. Like you said, the fire department, that's their main access in there. When we hit the beach in the morning, that's our main access also. And coming and going, that's pretty much Black Skimmer is for the emergencies and.
Yeah, that's kind of where my head was at.
I have a question, Matt. I know we were trying to build our reserve up and deal with the state deal, and if we do this, it's going to go the opposite way that we need to do our reserve, correct?
Yes, sir, in theory. We're very close to the 25% mark, which is what our target goal is.
So the state, explain that to us.
So the way that it works for us, Emerald Isle, we are audited each and every year, and we have to produce our CAFR, our audit findings. Emerald Isle fluctuates around 25% savings, which means you take your total budget, whether it's 12 or 13 million, and you need to be able to cover your costs for a 90-day period or 25% of the year. In our particular case, we're fluttering rate at that 25% mark. And so the last five years during my tenure, we have increased the budget and the savings in that area and have increased our reserve over time. That's where we're faced with these difficult decisions of what to fund when and what to fund. Also backed up against the conversation that we're never in a position then choose, we don't want to raise taxes. So our goal is to keep the lowest possible tax rate, deliver the greatest level of service, and hit, as Commissioner Taylor indicated, a minimum of a 25% cash reserve in the event that you had a catastrophic issue occur, natural event, that sort of.
Thank you.
Now, when I was out campaigning and people were speaking to me, this, the idea, I was the one brought this up because it was brought to my attention. And I took my family and we walked down to Black Skimmer, and we walked out there and like a couple of times, we had to dodge the, you know, get off onto the side because the cars, when they're exiting the beach, usually approaching a pretty good volume of speed because they don't want to get stuck and bogged down where it's, it's kind of trenched up right there. And so, and then while we were there, we saw several other people using the vehicle accessway just like we did to access the beach there. And so I brought it up. So the reason for this is just, it's for safety, number-one issue. Did you consider posting rope pedestrian access?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes, we did.
And is that not viable or is that?
I mean, it is viable. We can do it. You know, along with the block wall or the concrete, once you just, if that's what we decide you want to go the rope and post, then I will have to reach out to KAMA, see what we're allowed to do.
I don't understand the wall. I was kind of thinking like most pedestrian accessways even required by KAMA, required to go over the dune rather than cut through it.
Well, from my experience, if we go over the dune, we'll probably be in the same situation we are at the Point. We filed a topical thing and we get not complaints, but we get asked to lower the dune, to make it more feasible and accessible for walking. So I feel like if we're going to do that, then that's what you're going to end up with at the Point. And the only reason I say that is because when Rudy was here, when we had the beach re-nursed at that time, I asked him about widening the end of the Black Skimmer ramp with the two dunes that were there. And even though there is still that one little outlet in between the two dunes, the two to the side of the driving ramp does help protect. So that's why, my opinion is, I really didn't want to go that route and remove dunes and take that route to ruin or hit more wash-up coming in further than it needs to. But yes, the rope and post, it was an option. We did look at it.
While Joe's looking that up, if you're, are you suggesting or questioning, should we post a rope inside the existing with footprint? Because what we were trying to do previously was the conversation of how do you separate vehicles from people? So it would require a minor widening of the opening, and to do that on the dunes' west side for Black Skimmer specific, we would have to hold the dune back, so whether it be wooden or concrete. And then when you put the block wall in, you would come off with a five-foot-wide access path, whether it is natural with post and rope, or hardened surface, or an elevated raised wooden surface. And what we priced was concrete, and you could still post and rope between that space and your retaining wall. So my question for Commissioner Brownlow, would you, would you want us just to run post and rope bifurcating what we currently have, narrowing the vehicular access? That's an option, too.
I mean, is it possible to pull it up so we can see it from Google Street View?
Sure.
Is it possible to find out where the next closest access is to each of these locations and the distance?
We have that.
For Black Skimmer, it would be Lee and Eagles Nest. And then for the Dogleg, I believe it would be the East Regional Access. And the other one, I believe the closest one would be around Connie, I think it is.
And we can show you airly.
Yes. And there's a pathway right before Connie.
I couldn't remember if there was one there. That's what I was thinking, but I wasn't quite sure.
I mean, they might be there. I'd like to see how close those are in relation to that, but I mean, people are going to use that access right there. And rather than them walking on the, in fact, there's the image right there. It seems like if we could put posts there on that grassy side on the east side of that access, already got a fence there, it looks like, or something, just so they could walk through that path there rather than on the, you know, they might be more inclined to use that instead of the, like walking in the road.
We're open to any.
My, my opinion is Dogleg should be out of the question. There's a condo community to the left. It provides beach access for all of its people. If you look at that area down there, the Emerald Drive part of it is business. And if you look at the houses, it's mainly oceanfront and second row. So really, it's only the second row that you'd be providing all this for on Dogleg, which if you go right down the street, they've got a ramp that they can walk to. I think that should be out of the question. I don't think that's, it would be worth spending that money. And again, I'd like to see how close the next access is to Black Skimmer. Because we provide pedestrian accesses to the beach, we provide vehicular accesses. That's just a big lump sum of money to spend.
Well, I'm kind of thinking post and rope, though, just keeping it real simple.
So if Greg moves over towards the west or going to the west to Eagles Nest would be the next, Black Skimmer?
What's that be?
Yeah, I think the thing about Black Skimmer is it's handicap accessible to, especially with like the beach chairs, they roll right down there real easy. The Lee and Eagles Nest are not beach wheelchair friendly.
How about, I don't know if it'll work or not, but if having some kind of like light or something, like when you're street crossing, it just like a flashing red light when somebody's walking on it, just an idea, and it shuts it down until the, and then no cars can go on it with that lights flashing. It'd be, we use it a lot at the airports and stuff, and it's just a flashing bright light, red light. And when there's pedestrians on it, that's shut down for driving until the lights don't flash. If you're thinking about safety, I don't know, it might be cheap enough to do something like that.
I think it could possibly be an option. The only thing I'm concerned about is if you put one, say, on the ocean side of how long it would last with the salt air and stuff like that. And your numbers for the post and rope, you were looking at about $450 for the post and then another $230 for the rope. So that's.
That's all I would think. That's all the other people are asking about that, too. That sounds viable.
All right, so let's, let's steer, we'll steer it back to Dogleg first. We'll, I know we're, we're talking about both. I don't want to get too mixed up there, so let's steer it maybe a little bit back towards Dogleg and let you, ladies and gentlemen, decide what you want to do at Dogleg.
I make a motion that we install post and rope at the Dogleg and just rule out all the other options that have been presented to us tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Sanderson has a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. We'll go to 12B, the, or excuse me, 12C, Black Skimmer pedestrian walkway.
I make a motion for post and rope construction for pedestrian access for safety there.
Commissioner Brownlow has the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you all very much.
Post and.
Post and rope. All right. Item number 13. Our Steen Parks and Rec Director Candace Dooley has some updates on current projects and then some budget requests to follow. Good evening, Candace.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening at your January budget retreat. You gave me a few tasks to tackle, and I'm here to present to you tonight some updates on some of those items as well as some budget requests for major projects. So if we could pull up that slideshow for me, thank you. So the updates that I have for you, I'm going to start with the bike and pedestrian path improvements. So I expressed to you before that we have some retaining walls, especially along Coast Guard Road that are failing. This is an example here. This is just west of the back gate to Land's End, and you can see where it's buckling there and the structure is actually failing. This one here is just west of the entrance to Dolphin Ridge. This, too, is Boeing significantly and is in severe need of replacement. I've received quotes for both of these walls, the first one being $9,450 for the one west of Land's End, and then $6,950 for west of Dolphin Ridge. So we will be moving forward on these projects in the next couple of weeks. And just as a reminder to you and to the public, all of this And just as a reminder to you and to the public, all of this funding is completely covered by the Bike and Pedestrian Fund from fundraising dollars. This costs nothing from the general fund, therefore nothing to the taxpayers. Asphalt repairs, this too is coming from the same budget. This is an example photo here of repairs that Public Works has already made for us by doing this house, work in-house. It's very helpful and saves us money. And so, it started to crumble along the side, reinforced it with crushed rock after cutting it out, and then replaced the asphalt. And we are about 90% complete with our asphalt repairs at this point in time. Ramp repairs within the Emerald Isle Woods. I presented you with some hard numbers to replace this ramp in January. These are some images of the ramp that is currently there that's going to be removed. For safety purposes, it is blocked. You cannot walk down this ramp. But you can see at the welding points where it has failed and it's breaking apart, here and here. And then if you notice here, the railing has actually broken off completely, making this impassable. So, we are working with a local vendor, Sanderson Boatworks, who is constructing a brand-new ramp for us. This is just a sample image. This is not the one that we are getting, but it will be constructed very much like this. So, our new one will be a fabricated aluminum ramp that measures three feet wide by 24 feet long with handrails and midrails on both sides. One end of the ramp will be permanently attached to the dock, and the other one will have a rolling assembly so that it can move with the tides. So, this cost us $9,180.50 for the ramp itself, and we are anticipating that it will hopefully be installed by May 1st. Next was the bike path lighting. We received a few concerns about the lack of lighting between Loon Drive and Mangrove Drive. Of note, there are currently seven permanent Carter at Craven electric light poles between Loon Drive and Mangrove. But since January, per your request, my team has installed two solar lights in this area that are motion sensitive so that we are sensitive to the needs of the people who live adjacent to this area, who do not want that light infiltration. So, we've installed that there, and I'm working with Public Works. Actually, we're going to be painting on the side of the bike path with reflective paint and the glass beads so that if you are following the safety recommendations of having a headlamp or a bike-mounted lamp, you will see the reflective paint and therefore you'll know where the edge of the bike path is. The basketball court. So, I brought this to your attention, that we do have some cracks within our basketball court. So, you asked me to get an estimate. It came back at $27,600 to remove and repour. At a staff level, we feel that the current basketball court is in fine condition, it's workable, and so no action would be needed at this point. So, with that, I will pause and take any questions you might have about our current projects before moving forward with budgetary items.
Thank you for that, Candace. Any questions for Candace on items A1 through 4?
When were the solar lights installed?
About two weeks ago.
Okay, just two weeks ago.
I haven't received any feedback yet.
Okay.
Hey Candace, on the dog down there, is there a kayak launch place? Some people asked me about that, I couldn't remember.
Give me about five or six slides and we're going to get there. Yes, there's not currently a kayak launch. It was destroyed by winter storm.
All right, we can, when you're ready, move on to 13B on the budget requests.
I'm ready when they are. Okay, so I have four major items that, Mayor, if you're okay with it, I would like to go through all four of the items, and then I will pass it off so that we can talk about how to finance these projects. And then I would look for directive from the board on all four items at the end.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, we're going to go over tennis courts, bathrooms, kayak launch, and the gymnasium floor. Tennis court options. So, just for everyone's reference, our tennis courts measure 120 feet by 108 feet. The current tennis courts have been resurfaced before. Resurfacing only lasts about 12 to 24 months, and it's not guaranteed to not have cracks within that period of time. So, I'm going to show you A, B, and C options. I'll try to do my best to explain them to you, and then at the end, I would be happy to answer any questions. But in January, you asked me to find option A for a complete demo and reconstruction of the courts. That came back at $259,765, which is astronomical in my opinion, but it includes everything that you can see there for demo, construction, new fencing, wind screens, coatings, postnets, and cleanup. And yes, I can hear a little bit. So, this is a redesign option. Again, just an option. You would have one full dedicated tennis court separated by a five-foot chain-length fence and then three dedicated pickleball courts, all within our current spacing. Again, these are just options from hearing from the public about pickleball versus tennis. Option B, this would be to just resurface and redesign with this option here. It includes the five-foot chain-length fence. It does include to answer some questions previously asked tonight, your posts, nets, roping, all of those major items are included. But again, this would be the option with the redesign. Option C takes us back to what I've been trying to do for the last 18 months, and unfortunately, the contractor never came. And just to answer a couple of questions, if I can skip to the side, we did not pay a penny towards any of the supplies that were delivered. And as a matter of fact, I still have the supplies on our property because the contractor will not even come and pick them up. So, we've moved on to a new contractor, and we will not be working with that particular contractor, but we did not pay any of your money towards that project. He just simply didn't show up. I have an email chain a mile long of trying to get him here and multiple phone calls. So, I promise you, it was not a failed attempt on the town's part. But going back to option C here, resurface and re-stripe, this would be $18,800. And this would give you your two tennis courts, four pickleball lines, sets of pickleball lines painted, and then the option of painting pickleball lines on the basketball court as well. So, moving on to the community center and Blue Heron Park restrooms. This too is another project we've been working on for several months, trying to make improvements and renovations within the community center. And so, here, this restroom is at Blue Heron Park, which is located just behind our tennis courts. These were constructed in 1984. That's our exterior image there. We have separate, you can see the entry doors, separate male and female units. So, this is an image of the inside of the restrooms. The male and female mirror one another, they are not different at all. This is within the community center. This is our men's restroom. You can see the stalls, the two showers, and our sinks. And then the same thing within our women's restroom. The tile within the restrooms is in good state and condition and would not be need to be replaced. But here's a list of what would be replaced for a cost of $50,000, and that includes your interior and your exterior restrooms. None of our items currently are touchless, so this is a big advancement for us. So, all toilets and urinals, sinks faucets, shower inserts, mirrors, soap dispensers, paper towel dispensers, and PVC stalls that come with a 25-year warranty would be covered for the $50,000. The kayak launch. So, thank you, Mark, for that. But, so our kayak launch, unfortunately, was destroyed during a pretty crazy winter storm. It was found in three different pieces washed up in the marsh within Emerald Isle Woods. And so, it since has not been replaced. It was not a budgeted item. This is just a sample photo of the purpose of a kayak launch, just for those who don't use it on a regular basis. You use your oar to pull yourself into the water, and then you can reverse it when you're coming back and use your oar to pull yourself back in. So, the ramp that I showed you earlier that's on order and being built currently would lead you down to the floating dock where this apparatus would be held. Estimated cost again is $12,000. Another much anticipated conversation, our gymnasium floors. So, for historical purposes, so you know, the building was constructed in between 1990 and 1991. It opened in December of 1991. The current floor was installed in 1996 after the previous floor had failed. The current floor was chosen due to the high moisture tolerance, and a 1/8 inch moisture barrier was placed underneath the flooring directly into the concrete slab. And this flooring at that point in time was state-of-the-art for high humidity environments. The large floor measures 108 feet by 88 feet. And these options here, so we've heard a lot about pickleball. I can tell you that indoor soccer is extremely popular in our building as well as basketball. So, after extensive research on the town's behalf, and I have Anthony Wood with me as well, who's been assisting me in this process, we have found materials that you can bounce a pickleball on. So, we could have indoor pickleball as well. I have some samples here that I can pass around to you. So, the green lines that you see in this image here would be your dedicated pickleball areas where you would have to sign up for a time to play. The black lines are your traditional basketball lines, and the white lines would be for your indoor soccer. Thank you, Matt. And while we cannot sole-source our materials and what we would like to have, this is a great example of what Mark has right now of a floor that will still breathe some and does not require a mat underlay, which would then hold the moisture, and then you're going to have the same issue with the buckling and the odor. This floor can actually do all of our sports that were just listed, our robust classes, our children will be able to safely play on it in the after-school and the summer programs as well. Cost estimate for this particular floor is $110,000. This, with local labor, would include removal of the current floor, multiple layers of sealant, a minimum of three, with 24 to 48-hour wait time between so that it dries properly, installation of the new flooring, striping for the three sports that I described previously, and the manufacturer would have a representative on-site for the entire process so that they could oversee the installation, and therefore that provides us with a 15-year warranty on the floor. Please note, this would require a minimum of six to eight weeks of closure of the gymnasium, not the entire facility, but the gymnasium itself. Ideal time, given our low numbers of attendance, would be November 18th through December 31st, but that would be subject to change if the project had to take longer. So, with that, I will, I was going to pass it off to Laura. I'm sorry to hear she had to leave, but Matt is going to go over the funding options and break it down. I have another slide for the other option as well.
Thank you. So, we were very fortunate. Over the last few years, we have procured well north of $12.5 million of outside grant funding. Some of those funds are dedicated ARPA or COVID-19. And if, if our media team could take the, instead of, thank you. The ARPA funds were dedicated for the replacement and repair of three walkway bridges inside of Emerald Isle Woods. The cost for those three bridges was set at $150,000 if we used an outside contractor. We looked at options and materials. We utilized a local engineer who went out and surveyed, and a structural engineer determined that the walkway anchors themselves and the crossbeams were in exceptional condition. It was a resurfacing of the bridges that were necessary. When that was the case, we were able to complete the top-grade work in-house with the Public Works team, and we have been able to purchase exceptional materials, longstanding materials in addition to the marine-grained wood. So, you'll now see vinyl hand railings, you'll see a pass-through surface that we are utilizing at our future walkway improvements, also with FEMA funding. So, we want to thank Public Works who completed the first two of the three bridges are near completion, and they're working on the third one soon. So, that's going to provide us with a savings of nearly $90,000. Then we took and dedicated the $9,100 or $10,000 towards the replacement of the ramp, which leaves us a savings of near $80,000 to $81,000 out of that grant. So, we have that first $80,000, which we can then utilize on any of these projects that you'd like to see. The second is a suggestion. We have held at bay $131,000 for the replacement of a private stormwater pipe that's located in the Cape Emerald subdivision. Historically, that pipe was installed by the builder. It's currently on private property and functioning perfectly fine. The town staff made an emergency repair there. It was early '23, late '22, but we made a repair there, excellent repair in their actual pond. There was a small leak and we repaired it. So, the pipe is currently functioning without issue. The concern for the Cape Emerald subdivision is they would like to move that pipe off the private property, relocate it into their HOA walkway, which the town fully supports, and the town stormwater runs through that jurisdiction. So, it's private piping that we have a mutual aid or an MOA agreement with. The only problem is the town's held these funds for over three years. They can't get the two parcel owners to sign an easement to allow us to either remove the pipe or to relocate the pipe. So, we have worked tirelessly with Cape Emerald. We support the Cape Emerald community, we support the Cape Emerald Board, but those two property holders will not allow us access to remove the private property pipe. Previous legal indicated that we should have a complete agreement in position. Obviously, the city's not allowed to go on private property without the residents' permission. So, at this point, one, the pipe is working as it should. Two, unfortunately, the Cape Emerald HOA Board can't get permission from those two residents. We are providing you an option for immediate concerns, and if you want to, we could then reallocate this $131,000, join it with the other $80,000, and it would give you $211,819, plus or minus, of unspent ARPA COVID funds, which we have control over. It doesn't give you sufficient funds to completely dig out and replace the tennis courts, but we opted here, as you can see on this list, for the higher of the two options for surfacing. So, whether you picked option B or option C, we could replace and resurface the tennis courts, putting in a new surface with surfacing, not a complete dig-out and replace. So, the resurface and redesign is an option. You could fix the bathrooms. We could also purchase a kayak launch, and you could do the gym floor if you took those $2 amounts and combined them, and you could green-light that immediately, and we could put it in the budget and begin construction without a tax increase and without impacting our reserve account. So, we tried to find as creative as a possible way to fund initiatives that this board set forth on January 4th and 5th. Those are our talking points tonight. We'd love to answer any questions that you have. We think that, and I'm not trying to be a spoiler here, we think the harder decision for you all is how many pickleball, how many tennis courts. That's going to be a very interesting conversation for us. We would love to support you any different direction. We know that having the indoor gymnasium floor replaced, giving us four additional pickleball courts, will be a win for everyone. And we know that we can do all of this work without raising taxes and without hitting our fund balance. Does that all make sense at a 100,000-foot level?
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
I've been involved with a lot of this discussion with staff and looking at the flooring options, tennis court options, pickleball options. I appreciate Matt and Candace involving me in that. I think the options that are presented are great ones. That's a highly durable floor that's down there in front of you. I tried to scratch it and couldn't. So, even for public events where you would wear heels or something of that nature, it's not going to hurt that floor, and it will still serve multi-purposes, which is the flooring of choice for a facility like this. Won't take any thunder from the staff, but I mean, there's some great options here, and I'm ready to make some motions.
We looked one time at the, when we were looking at that flooring, and I really like that composite material because it doesn't have any laminates in it, and it's breathable. So, we can go over top of a floor without any underlayment, and that's a plus-plus also. That was a concern I had about going back over top of a floor that might sweat through. But you mentioned one time also that because of all the striping that can go on there for several sports, which is wonderful that we can have four indoor pickleball courts too, there was a lighting option.
Yes, the lighting option is north of $200,000.
Just for the light?
Just for the system itself at minimum, and it's not made within the United States or used in the United States.
That's correct. And it's also not the ideal lighting. And when you're looking at what would be an ideal lighting, I think the NBA showcased it first this season, and it's actually under the court. And it comes up through the court and. And it comes up through the court, and for that type lighting, you're looking at half million dollars.
Just wanted to ask.
Just giving you your options, sir.
Throwing everything on the wall, okay.
That's good, you didn't stick.
And how many quotes were gotten, received, was it bids laid out for like the kayak launch ramp and the kayak launch itself?
That's just working with different distributors and giving me pricing. That's more of your average price. So without your directive, I won't go out for bids at this point.
Okay, you're going to go out for bids at that point?
Correct.
It doesn't require a formal bid if it's under $30,000.
I just want to make sure that we're getting, because that just seems a little high for a kayak launch.
You can definitely go with a lesser kayak launch, but it's going to be destroyed just like ours was previously. We need something very durable, especially on that area of the sound where we do, you know, have a lot of wind in that particular area. This particular launch was not even that old, just a few years.
That launch has, that launch has been replaced since it was originally built and installed. That launch has been replaced five times. Three of those launches were repaired. One was repaired twice, one was repaired four times, the other one was repaired twice as well. None of them held repairs. What Candace is proposing here is a fair price for the quality launch that I believe Emerald Isle wants to put out there, and it's also the most durable option that we can get in that price range, if I'm not mistaken.
Hundred percent correct.
Thank you.
Made with stainless steel components and?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yeah, if you're the one using the launch, you don't want the cheapest one available.
Yeah.
And again, I'm not against any of these projects. I'm just trying to be a prudent shopper with taxpayers' money, that's all.
Sure, if you'd like, I can go back to the slides. I think we're going to start with the tennis courts and answer any questions you might have there to go in order of your green sheets.
Yes, we'll go ahead and start with the tennis courts. And if there's any further board discussion, great. If not, we'll, I'll wait for a motion just for tennis.
I'd just like to say this. We've got Commissioner up here that was the head of Parks and Recs for 30 years, right?
Yep.
33 years? I think we should wait for her motion and support it. That's kind of where I'm at right now.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll, we'll lead off with item B1, tennis courts.
I make a motion to, and if, I do want staff input on this because I noticed that you proposed B in there. I am a bigger fan of C for the resurface and restripe. So I make a motion, if staff is acceptable with those terms, that we go with option C to resurface, restripe to accommodate four pickleball courts on two existing tennis courts with a third or fifth court on the basketball court at a cost of $18,800.
All right. Commissioner Sanderson has the motion on the floor for option C in relation to tennis courts. All in favor? Any questions?
Aye.
Before you vote, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure, sir.
So we would like to throw out a small nuance to that motion.
Okay.
Thinking ahead, if the board, if the board opts to purchase a new floor in the gymnasium, and we have four pickleball courts on the existing tennis courts and four pickleball courts indoor, we would like to have a voice for the basketball court that being the only outdoor court system, if you're going to opt for indoor pickleball, we would leave pickleball off the basketball court because the kids really don't have anywhere to play. Then they're not in competition with the fifth pickleball court.
I would certainly support that.
That's something for you all to discuss, but if we have, if we go from the current condition to eight pickleball courts, it's probably best to protect basketball, just a suggestion.
I would amend my motion to reflect that.
Say it out loud one more time.
I would amend my motion to reflect not moving forward with painting pickleball lines on the existing basketball court, but preserving that for future outdoor basketball use.
You'd like to proceed with which option?
It would still be option C with, with removing the striping of the basketball court. Still four pickleball courts on two tennis courts.
All right, so we have option C to exclude painting pickleball lines on the basketball court. That motion is on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion's carried, thank you. Community Center and Blue Heron Park Restrooms, we'll open it back up for discussion. And any questions for Candace?
I make a motion that we proceed with replacing bathrooms in both locations with the features mentioned on the slide in front of us at a cost of $50,000.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson has that motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you. Any more discussion or questions about the kayak launch? Excuse me.
For the reasons previously stated, I make a motion that we proceed with replacing the kayak launch at Emerald Isle Woods at a cost of $12,000.
All right, the motion is on the floor to replace the kayak launch at $12,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you. Drum roll, Community Center gym floor.
Mayor, before we, before we go to the gym floor, for all of our Cape Emerald residents, I would like to speak to that project briefly, if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
If you choose to reallocate the Cape Emerald stormwater funds for this project, I'd like to state that in the event that Cape Emerald finds those two signatures and brings their people together, if directed by the board, we would seek and secure any other funding necessary to help make those improvements. We don't want to leave our Cape Emerald folks stranded, but unfortunately today, over the last 36 months, they are at an impasse. So we want to make sure that they know that we're fully behind them as well. So that's more of a political savvy statement from this chair that we hear them, we want to make those improvements, and we would work towards that in the event that those two residents could come to terms and sign off on the easement access.
Extremely important, though, thank you, sir.
And before we, I mean, go to that, I've got a couple of questions about the Cape Emerald. I walked neighborhood with Mr. Berger on that, and he showed me the stuff that was going on, and I think it's a great venture and partnership with the town that we're doing with that. What's the current condition of that piping?
The pipe is in suitable condition. There has been separation of the piping at the joints in the private property of which Mr. Troy Callahan owns. We have always accessed it and made the joint repairs as needed. The best solution over time is to definitely get that pipe off of private property. There was a separation at the inlet box on the pond side, and I'm not trying to be humorous. When we had a disruption, and please, I'm not trying to be humorous, we believe that there was a turtle mating issue inside the pipe. So you can't make this stuff up. We had to go in and extract the turtles, and no turtles were harmed in the extraction of the pipe, but.
These were not sea turtles?
Yes, so, but we've had those kind of obstructions. So now we have a great system. Is there a better solution? Absolutely, we have that all teed up, ready to go. But the problem is just generalized permissible access. So to tell you today with a disclaimer, the government disclaimer, today it's working. We don't know if there will be future issues in it. We can't predict the future, but the water is flowing. We have a great relationship with Mr. Berger and the team at Cape Emerald, and once they get the two easements, we would gladly move it over, and we would work for funding that as quickly as possible and whatever means that the board would see.
And we could reallocate funds back toward that project?
You would.
Over time?
Any decision that you make, right? So you have a limited amount of funds and a high amount of needs. You would either reallocate from somewhere else or apply for different grant funding. If there's any surplus grant funding from our FEMA stormwater work, which we have a spreadsheet on, we would obviously address it. The reason that we funded Cape Emerald out of the ARPA COVID-19 funds, it was our highest priority. It has been and remains our highest priority. We funded that in August of 2020 and 2021 because we knew it was important. But the problem is, again, they couldn't get us permission to access. So to answer your question, it's operational today. Do we want to do it? Absolutely. And how we would guarantee funding in the future is really going to be up to the decisions made by this board whenever your choice is available. If it's immediate, you may have to dip in the fund balance. If it's six months and you have surplus, or if you have additional FEMA funds, I want to be very clear that there's no additional dedicated dollars. What we're doing is reprioritizing the existing COVID-19.
I would just like to see that we could build that fund back up over time in the event that it could open, you know, we get access to.
So let me be clear, there is no funding mechanism for stormwater. You collect no money. That's why the grant work that we've applied for has been so important. There will be no building it back up. It will be trying to determine if you're going to save tax dollars and make that repair, if you would finance it over time, or apply for another grant. That's, that's really the crux of why we've dealt with the $4 or $5 million of stormwater issues over the last few years. We've been so, and I'm not using this term lightly, but blessed to have access to those dollars to make all the critical repairs for the, for the community.
When that time comes, there's a great deal more potential funding sources for stormwater related issues than there are any of the items we're discussing here tonight.
Thank you, thank you. All right, any other discussion or?
One, one question.
Yeah, sure, bud.
Candace, just mentioning to you too, we're shooting for those dates if this passes with this gymnasium stuff. So we're thinking maybe January next year, this will be up and running as well. I'm just trying to get a timeframe so everybody understands.
That would be the hopeful unveiling is January 1st, but again, it depends on construction.
Right, and then what about the outdoor tennis courts? What's, I know you have to put it out for bid to find the person to do it, or do we have somebody that can do this now?
That's correct. So I would have to go out to bid for this particular project unless we just went with the $18,000, but, well, since we are, it depends on the weather. That was part of the reason we had issues last year, but I, with the contractor that I've been speaking with, I know that we could get it done as soon as possible.
What, did he, on just your conversation, what was the timeframe once they work on the outside? Do you have any idea how long it would be shut down on the outside part?
Again, weather dependent. They cannot work in the rain and they have to wait so many days after a rain event, but they would anticipate two to three weeks of closure.
And it's also temperature dependent.
Correct.
That's not wrong, okay. That's my question.
Thanks, sir. All right. Recommended action on the 13B4 Community Center gym floor?
I make a motion that we replace the gymnasium flooring, remove and replace it as described by staff at a cost of $110,000.
Commissioner Sanderson has the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support and directive, and I look forward to reporting back when we're complete with all these tasks.
Candace, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you to our entire staff. It's really eye opening to see everything that goes into finding those numbers, finding money to pay for it, and getting the plan together. So hats off to all of you, men and women. All right, item 14, my favorite part is comments from our town clerk. Counselor? Mr. Zapp?
Yes, sir. I, I wish I could have said it while Donnie was here. I've saved and reserved my comments for this point. We had an exceptional reception for Donnie Askew at lunch, and the entire fire service came out to support a gentleman that began his career here in 1988. Donnie graduated high school in '79 and began his fire service in '79. He coordinated his wedding with the start of his employment in Emerald Isle, and when offered the job, he stated that he had to wait to start because he and his lovely bride took their honeymoon, and Donnie started immediately thereafter. To say that this is his second family is not an understatement. The quote that Donnie said this afternoon at his luncheon that I want to reiterate for the public is, "I've never worked a day in my life and I've never had a job because every day coming to Emerald Isle has been fun for me." And the comment that staff made about Donnie is, even if he had a bad day, no one ever knew it because the second you graced those doors, he always, every single day, had a smile on his face. So we want to thank him for that. We want to thank Connie and his daughter because it's countless nights, it's every single hurricane you can think of from 1988 to today, Donnie Askew has been here and not at his house. And to see the camaraderie between he and Chief Walker when they reunited today, if you think it was a tearjerker with the call out tonight, to watch that group of people rally around one single gentleman who dedicated his entire career to a community was extremely powerful. So from everyone on staff, we want to shout out and say a big thank you to Donnie, to Connie, his daughter, and I think you saw his grandson was probably the most excited in the space to see him. So we hope that he gets to enjoy being a papa and then gets to enjoy the time that he has earned, but for those that care and are in his steed, you can tell that he, his cup has overflowed to the saucer and to the table, and he has poured into so many people it was countless today. So to Donnie, I send a big thank you. Mr. Drew Walker was at the podium tonight, and when I stepped back, he asked me if anyone was going to address the SRO question and why it was on the agenda. And I want to explain that it is on the agenda under consent because annually, the town of Emerald Isle has been and continues to support the SRO program at White Oak. He indicated that we have 119 students. That's currently 15.03% of the contribution of students at White Oak, which results in Emerald Isle paying approximately $3,879 plus or minus to that service. We know that the town of Cape Carteret, the Carteret County Commissioners and the sheriff are in a difficult position. As a parent of kids in elementary, I support the fact that we would have that SRO. We as the town, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, but we as the staff, we pay that bill, and for us to pay the bill, the board voted tonight for us to pay the bill. So I wanted to let Mr. Walker know why it was on consent because that has to occur for our office to send a check. We are in full support of Cape Carteret, we're in full support of our Carteret County team members, and this is a difficult decision for them. And so jurisdictionally, and I'll ask legal to support either way here, we as the city or the town can't actually send a police officer there. It's outside of our jurisdiction. So we've taken a lot of steps proactively, and we thank the board for doing all of that. So if I've misspoken or misdirected or I have any of our information wrong, please correct me, but we wanted to let our constituency know that the town has continuously for years, the entire time I've been here, has supported the SRO program, and we will continue to do so. If there's anything more that I could do from my desk for the board tonight, be glad to answer it. We thank you for all the budget clarifications and we'll work forward on those. There was a couple of questions about communication and strategy specific to the tennis court project. I'll highlight that at about 50,000 feet. Every time we had a chance, we made a public announcement, we gave a PSA about the status of that, and we also sent out emails. We were disappointed that those courts weren't resurfaced in 2023. We actively made no less than 20 engagements to that contractor, so on behalf of our desk to all the players, both pickleball and tennis, we tried extremely hard. To say that we're disappointed is factual, but we're excited to know that these new improvements are forthcoming. If you already aren't watching our website or following us on any of our social media channels, we encourage you to do so. We will put those updates out to when the closures will start, what the anticipated timeframe is. We'll also post it at the courts, but we just ask that if there's a better way to communicate to anyone of interest, whether it be pickleball, tennis and/or both, we'll gladly keep you updated as that's our primary goal. So we thank you all for that. Mayor, board, if there's any questions in my office, I'm glad to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Move to comments from our board of commissioners. I'm going to reverse it, start down at the other end there. Ms. Commissioner Sanderson? No comment?
Thank you for staff putting all those presentations together. I know Public Works, that was why, I mean, Public Works, you did a ton of work getting all this stuff together and getting those quotes, and Candace and your staff, thank you, along with everyone else.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Brownler?
I'd like to thank Assistant Chief Donnie Askew and his family for his, his service to our, our community and our citizens and keeping us safe. And like my time manager said, that he's, he's dedicated a large part of his life unselfishly to serving a community that he doesn't, you know, he lives in Swansboro, I believe, and doesn't even live here, but he doesn't look at it as a job. I graduated in '79 with, with Donnie, and we were good buddies, and we were just talking up there. Every time I saw him, we were just talking about, he loved my red Mustang back in the, back in the days, and we had some good times, and it's, I'm excited for this new chapter in his life, and I wish him the very best. I do ask a lot of questions sitting up here because the people elected me to come up here and kind of be their voice and representative, so I ask a lot of questions, not to be critical of staff or not to be, but just to demonstrate that, you know, I'm being, trying to be savvy with taxpaying dollars and, and trying to make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck and just, just doing all we can to stretch our dollars, but yet not be foolish with them, you know, you know, by, by trying to go so cheap that we're, we're being redundantly spending. So I'd really like to thank. So I'd really like to thank staff, all of our staff, the town police, fire department, administration, just public works. I'm out in the field, and I hear so many good things about our people. And I'm proud to be an elected official where people are complimenting our staff. And so it's, you guys work hard, and I'm honored to be a commissioner with you guys and work with you guys to make our town even better as we endure the growth that we're going through. Stormwater, speaking of the growth, I heard the comments about stormwater last time, and it was hard to vote the way I did, even though I heard the people speak. Again, that's a sample representative of people, yes, but there's also a large sampling representative of people that I spoke to that supported the change. And it was kind of like the other issue where I said with the water company, it was like 50/50. But once I explained to people that we're just going to remodel that ordinance and come back with it even better than before, they were really supportive of it. So I hope with some patience that people are going to see that we're going to make improvements to the town. I don't know that we'll ever fully resolve a problem that's just characteristic of a barrier island, just like sand and hurricanes. We can't stop hurricanes that are going to happen. We learn to live with it. But we can take preventative action and become resilient to it, just like we can with the local flooding issues. With the SRO at White Oak, the town's been supporting that, budgeting that position for years. I personally support that. My children went to White Oak over there. And I hope that the county, working with the municipalities, can work something out that we can get that position back as soon as possible. And I would support anything the town can do to work with, even serving on committees to help get that position back and make sure it's funded and effective. So that's, personally myself, I support that. And so, and I was real glad to see that these recreational parks and rec issues are being resolved because that was also one of the number, a top, I'll say a top issue when I was campaigning, I heard from the people. And after only four months of being on board, I know the town's been working on it previously, that we are bringing this to a point where we're going to see some improvements made. And I know that is a big safety issue on the tennis courts also. So very glad to see that happening. And I applaud the staff for finding ways to fund this and make it happen and getting it done. Again, and I also like to thank the Commissioners because everybody, I'm amazed at how hard everybody works at doing their side job because I think most people here are still actively employed. I'm still actively employed, even though I've retired from a state job. And to see what everybody here, the mayor and everybody's doing to do this and serve the community, I'm so impressed and proud to be a part of it. And I applaud all of you for doing your part. Thank you very much. And thank you, citizens, for your support and your confidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wood?
Thanks. I just want to thank everybody for coming out, everybody who participated. Hopefully, some of your questions were answered. I'm looking forward to the community conversation exchanges and get to make this more of a dialogue. It's hard to sit here and not answer when questions come up. So I think that's a great forum. Thanks for setting that up, and thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Ditto to what everybody said. When going last, you always don't get to say much.
You always go first.
Yeah. It's, Donnie, you know, I can't say enough, too. It's amazing to watch somebody can give most of their adult life, give it back. That's pretty impressive. So hats off to him and his family. Hope he has a great retirement. Matt, thanks for your relationship with the staff as far as finding that extra money and seeing that that money was stagnant at that level there. It almost felt like Christmas in April there because, you know, we'll take care of the people if they can get their problems worked out in that community there, and we'll work through it. But being able to not raise taxes and fix all these problems that we've been working on for four or five years trying to find the money, it was pretty exciting for me to be sitting here tonight and watching that happen so fast. Alicia, I know it had to feel good for you to be able to make the announcements down there, too, as far as stuff that you've worked 20 years trying to fix up and make nice. So it was a good night for me as a commissioner to sit here and watch things happen. So I enjoyed that. So thank you for that. Some good news tomorrow night. I'm meeting with the fishing tournament staff, and we had 10 students apply for the scholarships. We're going to be able to give out six scholarships again. So they're going through the process tomorrow to pick six out of the 10. They're just going to get a $3,000 scholarship. Thanks to all y'all for what you do for the fishing tournament. And next meeting, we'll announce who those people are. So I'm excited about that also. So thank you. Thanks, Mr. Drew. Let me be a Commissioner. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. I'll keep it short. Thank you, Commissioners, for the work that you do. It's not easy. Congratulations, town staff. You do a fantastic job, day in, day out, all of you. No matter what your role, you do a really, really great job. Thank you to our public for your concerns and comments and suggestions and feedback. They're always welcome.